Puck, I need to put up my scout sign. Scout sign. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us and as you look around, you will notice that we have a tremendous number of very talented people we are celebrating this evening. So with that, we'd like to start with roll call. Mr. Krishner.
Mrs. Spendenberg, all board members, except Mrs. Browning wasn't feeling well, are present for this meeting.
Fantastic. Next, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. I ask you to stand and also continue to stay standing. We have had a loss to our school community this past week and we would like to pay our respects. So if you could stay standing and just give a moment to a very talented teacher who's no longer with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Like I said, tonight, we have a number of very, very special presentations. Not only do we have students, but we also have teachers that we are celebrating. Once we get through our special presentations, we'll have an opportunity for young artists to take pictures with their family, buy their portraits, and we'll just have a, you know, quick little break. So as we move right along, we will start with young artists and with that, we turn to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. Well, this evening, I have the pleasure to honor our young artists and as you can see behind us here, we have their works of art and we get to enjoy them for the next six months in our public meeting room, so we're very excited. So if you are an art teacher for our young artists, if you would please stand to be recognized. And thank you so much to our art teachers that guide our students to help create these fabulous pieces of art. So students, when I call your name, if you could come up and you'll get a certificate from Mr. McMichael and shake his hand, and then you'll come up and stand here and you'll have the opportunity to shake the board members, but we'll form a line right here. So let's start with Presley O'Malley, a 5th grade student from Carmel Elementary. Olivia Schaefer, a senior from Carmel High School. Lizzie Nichols, an 8th grade student from Carmel Middle School. Mackenzie Millis, a 1st grade student from Cherry Tree. Ava Hannah, a 6th grade student from Clay Middle School. Parker Lewis, a kindergarten student from College Wood. Anna Shaw, an 8th grade student from Creekside. Abdullah Abdul Karim, a 3rd grade student from Forest Dale. Kate Falkenstein, a 2nd grade student from Mohawk Trails. Matthew Deng, a 5th grade student from Orchard Park. Emmy Bukavak, a 1st grade student from Prairie Trace. Camelia Malagorejo, a kindergarten student from Smoky Row. Elizabeth Parkinson, a 5th grade student from Town Meadow. Brecken Martin, a 2nd grade student from West Clay. And Charlie Taylor, a kindergarten student from Woodbrook. Congratulations to our young artists and if you would like to go, and you can shake the board members' hands.
Next, we have our 2018 Riley champion.
Yes, now I'll ask Dr. Tom Harmus to make the introductions.
Most of you are keenly aware of how important Riley Hospital is to this community and as we have the dance marathon at Carmel High School, raising over $300,000 for Riley, all those things are very important, but when they are able to touch individual children and they do so many of our kids here in Carmel Clay Schools and the great work that they do, we are very fortunate that in 2018, one of our students has been chosen as a Riley champion for his efforts and for everything that he does, not only for Riley, but for those thousands of kids that are treated at Riley every year. And I'm going to let him talk a little bit about that experience and congratulations, Rick Bog.
Hello, everyone, and first off, let me just say thank you for allowing me to share my story here tonight. It really means a lot to me and my family. I have to be honest, three years ago, I wasn't completely sure that I'd go to Carmel High School. There were a couple other schools that I had in mind, but I mean, I always did have that little voice inside my head telling me to stay in Carmel Clay Schools. But I ended up choosing Carmel High School because of the stellar academics, the wonderful sports teams, and the amazing music program that it has. But there was a much more subtle attribute that Carmel High School possessed that I wasn't aware about at the time. Because three years ago, I didn't know that I'd have multiple chronic conditions and that I'd miss many days of school, a multitude of tennis practices, and a lot of band rehearsals. Perhaps the notion is that a smaller school would have been better suited for me because a smaller school would be able to give more individualized attention to me, but this proved not to be the case because even though there are 5,500 students at Carmel High School, I felt that I've always gotten the individual attention that I've always needed. And I'm not just talking about inside the classroom, but also in extracurriculars. In Anaheim, for a DECA competition, even though there were 10,000 students there, I got the individualized attention that I needed because I had a number of room needs that I had. And Carmel High School was able to structure my entire trip just so that I was able to get those needs. I also want to mention the tennis team itself because everyone on it knows how much practice I've missed over the past three years. But this year, because of the environment that Carmel High School and Coach Fields has made, I was able to not only play in my first varsity match this year, but I was also able to win. But I wouldn't be here without a couple of key people and I just wanted to extend a couple of special thank yous tonight. And the first goes to our current principal of Carmel High School, Dr. Harmus. He's given me the support that I've needed the entire year and went as far as going to a Riley event with me last Friday, so I really thank him for that. I also wanted to mention Mr. Williams, our previous principal, who also gave me a lot of support. I also wanted to mention my counselors, Mr. Mike Sell and Mrs. Cole for being exceptional in structuring my school days that I, my life was easier at Carmel. And I also wanted to extend thank you to the tennis coach, Coach Fields, and the rest of the tennis team because as I've mentioned, I did have to deal with a lot of adversities throughout the last three years. Lastly, I want to thank almost all of my teachers for being extremely compassionate and helpful, especially when I've missed two, three, or sometimes even four days in a row. I especially wanted to thank my English teacher last year, Mrs. Baum, for being exceptionally helpful and extra special to, as a teacher to me. As Dr. Harmus mentioned, I am, I was selected to be a Riley champion for 2018 and I am currently serving as the Honorable Chair for the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation as well. And after my speeches that I've given for these roles, I've always been asked, "Where do you go to high school? You seem pretty confident in the way you speak." And I always say Carmel High School. And I'll always be a proud Greyhound and I'll never forget the memories that I've gotten here. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Carmel High School Boys Tennis 2017 State Champions.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Jim Enske.
Oh, Mr. Wolf. You've been confused before.
Okay, Mr. Wolf will then recognize the 2017 Boys Tennis State Champions as well as the 2017 Boys Cross Country State Champions.
Thanks, and first, on behalf of the entire Carmel High School Athletic Department, I want to thank the school board and the administration for giving us this opportunity to recognize some of our fall sports, but also, once again, to be humbled by these future Greyhound art students. Holy cow, great job, congratulations. What I'd like to do is introduce the head coach of these teams and have them come up and mention a couple of words about their season and also introduce the young men who are here tonight. First off, our boys tennis team and head coach Spencer Fields.
Thank you, everyone, a pleasure to be here. Thank you for hosting us tonight. Come on up here, everyone. This team is easy to talk about. They did some very special things this year, including starting the season ranked number one, going undefeated, winning a state championship, being ranked number one in a dominating fashion. We did some things that were actually very rare in the history of high school tennis in the state of Indiana. This team ranks as one of the best probably to have ever played as a team. We had over 61 athletes on our tennis team. We had a overall GPA of somewhere around a 4.0. I don't think the stats will come out yet this year, but last year, we had above a 4.0 GPA for 55 athletes. The cool part is all these guys really do really enjoy each other. It's one of the most fun tennis environments I've ever been around in my 20 years coaching. It's just a really daily fun endeavor for these guys to be together and to be around each other. The singles players were undefeated. We have a undefeated two-time repeat state singles champion in Patrick Fletchall. Patrick has committed to play tennis at IU in his future and is going to study business. Something like that. I like that answer. It's getting better and better every time I ask. But truly, a team that will stand out in the history books for tennis and one that I will dearly miss as a coach. They're fantastic gentlemen, so let's see. I need to say their names, right? Number one, Patrick Fletchall, you have a certificate here. Number two, Presley Thienemann. Number three, Nishanth Basavareddy. Number one doubles, Drew Michael and Timmy Dixon. Number two doubles, Garrett Lloyd and Uday Lomada. Also present today, Jonesy McNamara, Mitchell Mercer, Mohit Manchala, Will Bruni, Rick Bog, and our two managers, Julia Miller and Grace Marchese. So thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thanks, and our second state championship team tonight, our Boys Cross Country Team and head coach Colin Altavot.
Thank you, and thanks for your support. It really is great to see all the opportunities that we give at Carmel Clay Schools for our students. These seven boys, six, standing up here, were six of the seven that ran in the state championship in late October, but they represent the 159 boys on the cross-country team at the high school. The team won the MEC, sectional, regional, semi-state, and won the state championship for the fourth time in the last six years. And the season is not over. We will compete in the Nike Cross Nationals flying out on Thursday and the meet is Saturday, December 2nd in Portland, one of 22 teams to qualify for that. Our six that are here tonight, Senior Trey Harris, Senior Kealan Grant, Junior Will Murphy, there's sophomore Will Murphy, sophomore Ben Myers, Junior Calvin Bates, and Senior Colin Murphy. The team also had four first-team All-State academic, academic All-State and two honorable mention. And team captain Ben Miller was unable to be here tonight. Thank you.
Seeing that we've had some movement up front, there are some seats available. If those standing in back would like to find a chair, you are welcome to do so. Next on the agenda, we have... Next on the agenda, we have the Carmel Education Foundation Fall Grant Recipients, and for that, I turn to Mrs. Stephanie McDonald.
Thank you, Leyland. Thank you, school board. We also want to thank this wonderful group of teachers we have represented here this evening. Barbara was unable to be here tonight, so she sends her congratulations to all of you. We had a record number of applications this year, so we just got to get out there and raise more money so we can give everybody what they need. We would love to do it. I'd like to introduce our grant chairperson. This is Jan Byers. She is our grant chair, read every single grant upside down, around every which way, along with our grant committee. She is a very dedicated worker with the grant committee and we so appreciate her as a member of our board and able to take upon this task. Jan will introduce all the grant winners and come by and you'll get your certificates and so forth. Thank you all for coming and thank you also for writing those grants.
Thank you, Stephanie. Well, this was real exciting this year, this particular round of grants, because we had so many. We thought that with $25,000 to award, that that would be great, but we didn't realize that we would have so many people who would write, and that's a good thing to have happen, but we had 68 people write grants and they requested for more than $50,000. So unfortunately, we do have to raise more money in order to fund more grants as they become available. This time also, it was an opportunity that I had not had yet was to read some professional grant opportunities and grants there for teachers saying, "I just need some more training or more professional development, or I want to get trained on a new idea." And that's really good as well, so I loved reading those and I know the committee did too, and I don't want to forget them. Jill Reese, Carol Baker, and Margaret Hollings. Yes, and so it was, it was good. We had, the entire board actually read, the Education Foundation Board read some grants and they awarded three grants as well. So that was good, to get more people involved in order to see all of the good work that is coming, so I praise all of you for writing. And so, here we go. I will call your names and talk about then the school and then just a little bit, we're going to start with regard to the professional development grants. So, excuse me, Stephanie McCourt, if you could come forward then, from Carmel Middle School. And this is for an internship at the Center for Teaching and Learning about Nancy Atwell. Next, Julian Wonderschmidt. An individual professional development for a NCTE conference. Jen Bub, from Carmel High School, for an NAEA conference. Thank you. Kelly Flager, from Orchard Park. Conscious Discipline. Oh, Laura Hunter is also involved in that. Kristen Kennedy and Catherine Staples from Smoky Row. Two techie teachers take Chicago.
They're from two different schools, so they're going to bring back lots of good information.
And that's nice to see that they're going to share. Jen Marshall and Lauren Alexander and Holly Ben trees from Prairie Trace. And this one is the epicenter of EdTech going to this conference. Next, Catherine Staples and list of them, Kristen Kennedy, Kristen Kessler, Lisa Carroll, Scott Shelley, Jeff Shue, Courtney Davis, Lindsay Herman, Ellie Hutchins, Leslie Clark. And this is Town Meadow, and this is for some Google greatness to become certified in some more Google operations.
Prairie Trace and Carmel Middle and Clay and Carmel High School. So, spread it around.
I guess. Next, Kristen Taylor, Carmel Middle School, Climbing the Steps with Rocky. Okay, Tracy Hastings, Carmel Elementary, and this was a district grant to get a grip and put some grips on pencils for small children to help them for those who need it as they start out. Next then, Amy Adams with Kristen Seim, Renee White, Victoria Enrol, from Carmel Elementary, and this is supplemental seating for student success. Next, Stacy Arnold, along with Rachel Harder, Gretchen Smiley, Ryan Snyder, Travis Ramsey, Amy Collins from Clay, and it is, you can do the cube. Amy Bannister, there were 11 schools, a group of teachers then, and this is printmaking jelly. Kristen Kessler, Elizabeth Call, from Carmel High School, group of teachers for the Learner Center Classroom. Next, Vanessa Cruz Martinez, Creekside Middle School, Language Learning as a Tourist. Now, doesn't that sound great? Liz Wagner, Evan Snyder, Michelle Jarson, from Clay. And it is Road Trip Nation. Okay. Paige Ware and Wendy Bass, from Carmel High School. I can see clearly now. Next, Meredith Wood, Lisa Baker, Elizabeth Brown, Beth Larson, and Richard Lu. Playing is Learning. Okay, next, Lisa Baker. And this is for fluorescent light covers. Heidi Brinkman, from Cherry Tree. And this is the Sticky Library. Next, Amanda Chalice, and for STEAMs, Makerspace. Next, Kelly Douglas, from Carmel High School, and I know the Learning Center. This is for Graduation and Beyond. Next, Will Ellery. This is Swiveling Through the Classroom. Next, Elizabeth Quakenbush, from Orchard Park. And this is Quakenbush Books, Buy More Books, Continuing This Project. Margaret Loughler, from Woodbrook. Flexible and Focused is the name of this grant. Catherine Reel, from Carmel Elementary. Flexible Friends and Focused Friends. Jenny Tucker, from Creekside. Exceptional Children, Exceptional Art. Ann Phelagie, along with Lisa Smith, Linda Smith, excuse me, Tina Gao, Lindsay Putnam. This is Alternative Seating for Teacher Checkout. Jamie Henderson, Elizabeth Anderson, Lindsay Yoder. This is from Mohawk Trail, and this is the Cell Library. Amy Sikowsky. This is Google Expedition Taking Us Places. Jill Ship, from Prairie Trace. Keyboarding Without Tears. Evan Snyder, from Clay. And this is Elite Gaming Live. Tal Schweitzer, from Orchard Park. And this is Social Emotional Learning Through Mindfulness. Climbing the Steps with Rocky.
Kristin Taylor.
Okay. Climbing the Steps with Rocky.
Kristin Taylor.
Okay. Well, this was one time, and I don't remember honestly if we did say that or not, where each and every school was awarded something. And that has not happened. And as you can see, we had a lot of people that applied, and it's a good problem to have that we have so many that apply. And the writing has become so much better. We're actually going to think about giving out a grant, asking someone who did a very nice job to see if we couldn't let everybody see what that is, in order to see all of the dimensions that we really like, so that we can entice more people. Don't be afraid, write, come along and do it, because we'd like to award more money. And we hope that you have great results with this, and we'll be looking forward to hearing those results. Thank you so much. In the spring, we will go ahead and offer more classroom grants. We won't be doing the professional development grants in the spring, but more to come with that, hopefully then in the next fall. So, good luck with everything.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We will move right along to consent. Make it a motion on the table to approve consent.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we go to action, and our first action item is the Adoption Policy 4350, Student Suicide Prevention. And to that, we turn to Mrs. Nouse.
Yes, we brought this to the board for discussion and the original proposal at our last board meeting, and we're bringing this back to you for a vote to approve this policy. This is a suicide awareness and prevention, requires all school corporations to adopt a policy intended to increase student suicide awareness and prevention. So the statute was presented, and we need to turn this into policy, and this has been approved by our general counsel, and we are recommending the changes to our policy.
Thank you, Pam. Make it a motion on the table to approve changes to student suicide and awareness prevention.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Amy?
Yes, and thank you. So, part of the pieces of this law is to make sure that we are doing ongoing training, and we do do training with our teachers, but we will actually up that training for all of our staff members for, as Pam said, the prevention of suicide. And that training will include understanding the risk factors that are involved, warning signs, protective factors, response procedures, as well as referrals, postvention, and then also resources regarding youth suicide prevention. And it is focused on how do we prevent it, and then also, what do we do if, you know, we do have an unfortunate event? How do we deal with that as well, so that we don't have any other ones and we can't prevent that? And so that's what that training will do. And all the law requires that we train our teachers, they get trained every... Have training every three years, and so that we will incorporate that new training starting this summer and for next school year.
Dr. Dudley, will any of this training be online, that if somebody wanted to go back and review, they would have that opportunity?
Yes, most likely the training will be all online, and so it'll be module-based, so that they can go back and review the different modules as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Motion carried, and moving right along. Second action item is our Carmel Clay Schools and Ivy Tech Career and Technical Education Partnership. And to that, we turn to Dr. Dudley as well.
Yes, thank you. So, what we are proposing is to have a partnership to extend our career and technical education pathways for our students, which this would allow students to... They would be enrolled at Carmel High School, and then they also would take courses at Ivy Tech in four different career pathways that would expand on the offerings that we currently offer now at Carmel High School. And so those areas would be in technology, in auto mechanics, also in building and trades, and cybersecurity. And so we're looking at expanding those offerings for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Make it a motion on the table to approve the Carmel Clay Schools and Ivy Tech Career and Technical Education Partnership.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Just want to say thank you for bringing forward another opportunity to really enhance what we do at our schools. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we turn to Mr. McMichael, the Authorization to Advertise for Public Hearing Regarding the General Obligation Bonds.
Thank you. At the November the 13th meeting, the board discussed the issuance of $8,195,000 of general obligation bonds. These bonds would be repaid over the next two years. With the impact of the circuit breaker, the Capital Projects Fund is no longer sufficient to keep up with our capital needs, as well as, we also need additional funds to meet the current demands for technology. So the projects are listed here. We would... This advertisement would provide for two hearings, the first being held on Monday, December the 11th, and then a second hearing on Monday, January the 8th. So we'd recommend your authorization to advertise these hearings.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Make it a motion to authorize the advertising for the public hearings regarding the general obligation bonds.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, didn't you say at the last meeting that these bonds would be repaid within two years?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That's what I thought.
Thank you for clarifying, Pam. Any other questions? All those in favor of supporting the Authorization to Advertise for the Public Hearings Regarding the GEO Bonds? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And last but not least, we have the Additional Appropriations, the 2017 General Fund and Referendum Fund. Mr. McMichael?
Yes, this hearing is with regard to additional appropriations for $2.8 million in the General Fund and $400,000 in the Referendum Fund. We have these funds. This... The appropriation process simply provides for the authorization to actually use the funds. Our... These budgets were developed over about a year and a half ago, and since that time, as the board is aware, we have settled our teacher contract, which also involved retroactive pay to go back to when that contract expired. We've also had some other changes with regard to special needs programming. We received more money from the state to provide for... It goes through the school corporation, but it's actually for non-public schools. And so... But we have to appropriate those funds in order to be able to send them to the other districts. So... And so this authorization is part of the process to establish that additional appropriation.
Thank you, Ms. McMichael. Make it a motion on the table to approve the Additional Appropriation for the 2017 General Fund and Referendum Fund.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. As we move along, we go into our discussion items. And the first discussion item is the First Read in a Policy 8462, Child Abuse and Neglect. Pam?
Thank you. This statute was changed in July of 2017. It went through the long session and took effect in July to reflect direct, immediate reporting of cases of abuse and neglect to the DCS or local law enforcement. And that was a change in our old policy, and so we had to add those to this policy. This policy was rewritten to incorporate that information, and has also been looked at by our general counsel, to make sure that we had the language needed for this policy. And because of the numerous changes in the policy, or in the law and the statute, we needed to rewrite the whole policy. So that's what we are presenting to you tonight.
Thank you, Pam. Open up the floor to discussion or questions.
I guess I'll just note that I did ask and was confirmed that the education for staff on this new procedure has already started, since the law was effective, and that we are just approving the policy to be consistent with what state law requires.
That is correct. And that was a great question you had posted, so I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Pam. So we'll plan to bring this back at our December 11th meeting. Thank you. Next? Oh, it's me. The 2018 School Board Meeting Dates. I know we circulated the dates. We do have a number of days that don't necessarily follow...
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we turn to Mr. McMichael, the Authorization to Advertise for Public Hearing Regarding the General Obligation Bonds.
Thank you. At the November the 13th meeting, the Board discussed the issuance of $8,195,000 of general obligation bonds. These bonds would be repaid over the next two years. With the impact of the circuit breaker, the Capital Projects Fund is no longer sufficient to keep up with our capital needs, as well as, we also need additional funds to meet the current demands for technology. So the projects are listed here. We would, this advertisement would provide for two hearings, the first being held on Monday, December the 11th, and then a second hearing on Monday, January the 8th. So we'd recommend your authorization to advertise these hearings.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Make it a motion to authorize the advertising for the public hearings regarding the general obligation bonds.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Pam?
Yes, didn't you say at the last meeting that these bonds would be repaid within two years?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That's what I thought.
Thank you for clarifying, Pam. Any other questions? All those in favor of supporting the Authorization to Advertise for the Public Hearings Regarding the Geo Bonds? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And last but not least, we have the Additional Appropriations, the 2017 General Fund and Referendum Fund. Mr. McMichael?
Yes, this hearing is with regard to additional appropriations for $2.8 million in the General Fund and $400,000 in the Referendum Fund. We have these funds, this, the appropriation process simply provides for the authorization to actually use the funds. Our, these budgets were developed over about a year and a half ago, and since that time, as the Board is aware, we have settled our teacher contract, which also involved retroactive pay to go back to when that contract expired. We've also had some other changes with regard to special needs programming. We received more money from the state to provide for, it goes through the school corporation, but it's actually for non-public schools, and so, but we have to appropriate those funds in order to be able to send them to the other districts, so, and so this authorization is part of the process to establish that additional appropriation.
Thank you, Ms. McMichael. Make it a motion on the table to approve the additional appropriation for the 2017 General Fund and Referendum Fund.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. As we move along, we go into our discussion items. And the first discussion item is a First Read in a Policy 8462, Child Abuse and Neglect. Pam?
Thank you. This statute was changed in July of 2017. It went through the long session and took effect in July to reflect direct, immediate reporting of cases of abuse and neglect to the DCS or local law enforcement. And that was a change in our old policy, and so we had to add those to this policy. This policy was rewritten to incorporate that information, and has also been looked at by our General Counsel, to make sure that we had the language needed for this policy. And because of the numerous changes in the policy, or in the law and the statute, we needed to rewrite the whole policy. So that's what we are presenting to you tonight.
Thank you, Pam. Open up the floor to discussion or questions.
I guess I'll just note that I did ask and was confirmed that the education for staff on this new procedure has already started, since the law was effective, and that we are just approving the policy to be consistent with what state law requires.
That is correct, and that was a great question you had posted, so I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Pam. So we'll plan to bring this back at our December 11th meeting. Thank you. Next? Oh, it's me. The 2018 School Board Meeting Dates. I know we circulated the dates. We do have a number of days that don't necessarily follow our traditional pattern of the second Monday of each month being our workshop, and then our fourth Monday being a regular session. The two big outliers was, you know, April 10th, which we moved to a Tuesday because many of us will be at the National School Board Association Meeting on Monday. The following difference would be September 11th, which is also a Tuesday. Rosh Hashanah falls in that timeframe, and in recognition and observance of religious holidays, we wanted to be sure to bump the date to a Tuesday. Now Katie did bring up that those two nights are Parks Board Questions, or Park Board Meetings. So, I guess that's up for discussion. If we want to bump it yet another day and make it a Wednesday and not a Tuesday, we have that flexibility. So, we have time to think about it, time to discuss. We can either, you know, if you feel passionately one way or the other, we could make those changes. We don't have to take official action until December 11th, and then that'll be circulated to all the media. The other three spots, of course, we traditionally have one meeting in May, July, and December. We just have the traditional business meeting, since those are extremely busy times of the year. And with that, I open the floor to questions or comments.
Yes, in July, we will also have a retreat, a Board Retreat, so that will be taken up to the place sort of of the workshop. So, we will have two meetings, but not an official meeting here.
Right, and I guess that's something to share, that we traditionally have our professional development for the Board throughout the year. July is one of those times, we'll have one in January as well. Any other comments?
Well, I guess first, going back, I'd just like to thank the Policy Committee for all their work throughout the year, and then, thank you for considering the Jewish holidays. And I think Katie was pretty adamant that she would not like to have a conflict between meetings, so I think we should, you know, continue discussion between meetings about dealing with those two dates and be flexible with that.
Okay. Well, why don't I check the calendar? I don't know if there's any specific religious holidays or what have you, or any other reason that we would have a conflict moving it to a Wednesday. I would be in full support of bumping it to a Wednesday. But I will check that, and then follow up with the Board with an email. The other question that we discussed or toyed with, August 13th is the day before school starts. We could technic, we could bump the meeting to an earlier time if we wanted to, so we, most of us have children in school, and others who might be in the audience also have children, and they might want to be home with them right, you know, the night before school starts. So if we wanted to meet at 5:00 or 6:00, traditionally our August meeting, we're discussing legislative priorities, and our legislative priorities will probably be more significant because we're going into a long session next year. So it's something to think about.
And January 8th is the day of school.
The first day of school.
It is a teacher workday, yes?
Yes.
Okay. We could make that a Tuesday. Shall we move that one to a Tuesday as well? Well, I will highlight all of these dates.
Don't take it matters.
Okay.
Reorganization. Reorganization meetings don't usually take very long. It's not a workshop, it's just a time for us to come in and figure out how we're going to reorganize the Board, and we have to do that within a certain time period by law.
Well, actually, we will be, that will be a workshop as well as reorganization. We will be reorganizing, but that is a workshop date as well. So we'll be doing technology, as we have it. Technology devices, the next step. So, on that day, it will be a little longer, but I will check with other Board members to see when everybody will be in town, since that technically isn't a day that students would be in school. Thank you for bringing that up, Lynn. Any other outliers that we need to consider? If we would move the meeting up, how early could we meet? The day before school starts? Would you have any challenges of meeting, like at 6:00? No, maybe?
7:00 is fine with me, so I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Well, that sounds great. Then, the outliers, I will send an email with some suggestions, and then we'll bring before the Board a formal, formal date that we will take action on at the December 11th meeting. Thank you. Next, we have the donation of property to City of Carmel for additional right-of-ways at Carmel Middle School. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. Yes, the city has requested the Board donate a parcel of property in front of Carmel Middle Schools. They need to and want to improve Guilford Road. This property, this will not be detrimental to the school corporation, it's really on the very outer edges of the property line. And the road improvements will actually be of assistance to the school corporation, will make it easier to, for the, when the cars come for student pickup, it will, it'll provide for wider road and some, a D cell lane that would be advantageous to us and the parents. So this, there's actually two parcels. One is owned by the School Building Corporation, and the other currently, and the other one by the School Corporation. So David Day has prepared a memorandum for the Building Corporation, and he'll go through a very similar process with the Holding Corporation, as we're doing with the School Board, and so we'd recommend that you consider this donation and consider acting on it at the next Board meeting.
Thank you, Roger. I open up the floor to discussion. Pam?
Yes, Roger, what will happen to access to this, to this school while the construction is going on?
I don't know specifically. I don't think that'll have much of any impact, certainly.
Because it's, isn't it right across one of the entrances that we use?
Well, yes. It's along the entire, most of the property line along the street side. But clearly, they will make accommodations for that, because we wouldn't allow that to interfere from parents or visitors to go in and out of the school.
Because there'd be a lot of school traffic, and I know what happens with all the other construction that goes on in this city, and how it interferes with...
Yeah, most of this construction, of course, is on the road itself that the city already owns, and so, as it affects, I mean, the project is much larger than just this little sliver that, of the school property itself. And so, the same as the city does with other construction projects, including for the schools, if they, if they improve the road out front, they're going to be considerate of the need to use the school, you know, during the school day.
Okay.
Do we have a projected time that they're hoping to start this project? Okay.
I think it's next year.
Thank you. Mike, did you have any questions?
Yeah, Roger, I just want to thank you for answering kind of the questions I had before the meeting. And I think it's important to note that the size of the parcels that are being donated are very small.
Yes.
And like you said, they are right along the road and adjacent to the road, and while I'm sure the construction process will be a headache, I think that they will improve access to the schools in terms of, I know you said extending turn lanes, improving sidewalks and paths, curbs and landscaping, so I think it's also important that, you know, we value our relationship with the City of Carmel, and we have a good working relationship, and when they ask for us to do things, we also sometimes ask them to help us, and so, it's important to recognize that we're all on the same team. They value what we add to the schools, what we add to the city, and we value what they do for us, so thank you.
Cam?
Yeah, did they say how long this would take?
I don't recall, but I right now...
Okay, thank you.
We'll follow up with that.
Just on a side note, since this will be happening, would this be an opportunity for us to maybe revamp, we go to Carmel Middle, and I know logistics in the parking lot has been a challenge over the years, is this perhaps something we should look at and kind of address in one big swoop?
Not necessarily together, but we are, we've talked about the fact that we've modified the parking, parking lot to accommodate the parents that are doing the pickup and drop off. So we will be doing a project that will reconfigure that in a more permanent way.
Thank you. Any other questions? Who knew this would be such a hot topic?
That's right.
And moving right along, Roger, we go back to you for the monthly, our monthly financial update.
Okay, let me get that up here. All right, excuse me, as I reported last month, you'll see that our cash balance has declined a bit from September, which was what we would anticipate, because we are, most of our expenses, as the Board knows, is for salary and benefits, which are very regular every two weeks, while our revenue particularly from, specifically from the referendum comes in when people pay their property tax. And so, this balance will continue to decline a bit until we start receiving property tax draws in November and then December, so then it will go back up as anticipated.
Thank you, Roger. Open up the floor to questions. Pam?
Yes, we get the bulk of the property tax in December, is that correct?
Yes.
Because the payments can come in through November, but the bulk of it will be...
Most of it will come in in December.
Any other questions? Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Next, we turn to Superintendent's Report, so either Dr. Dudley or Mr. McMichael?
Yeah, we have a few things. I have two specifically. First, I'd like to share that Amy Todd Crosby and I were very proud to attend the Indiana Teacher of the Year Program on Friday, November the 18th, and recognize Carmel Clay's Teacher of the Year, Todd Stewart. That was a very enjoyable evening and very impressive to be reminded just how excellent teachers we have in the state of Indiana, as well as in Carmel Clay Schools. And then secondly, like to congratulate, send congratulations to the Carmel Middle School Orchestra Chamber, who have been selected to perform at the prestigious Midwest Clinic International Band and Orchestra Conference in Chicago, and that's on December the 22nd.
And also, I'd like to add, on Thursday, November 16th, Roger and I had the pleasure of being the emcees for the District Spell Bowl, and congratulations to Smoky Row for placing number one in the state, and also, number one in the district, and also congratulations to Town Meadow, Prairie Trace, and College Wood for placing in the top 10 in the state competition. Yes, and then also, congratulations to Orchard Park, they were named a 2017/18 Common Sense Media Digital Citizenship School, and so they achieved this accreditation through, going through a variety of checks and balances, making sure they're teaching digital citizenships, making sure they're teaching our students to be responsible digital citizens. And all of our schools are working towards this digital citizenship accreditation, and they join Cherry Tree, Smoky Row, Prairie Trace, and Woodbrook, who have also been named digital citizens and all, digital citizenship through Common Sense Media, and all of our other schools are working towards achieving this accreditation as well. So we're very excited for them, and congratulations to Orchard Park.
Thank you. I will say, I do enjoy the Common Sense Media television, you know, little infomercials. Those are really, really positive. Next, we have our Board Reports, and to that, we turn to Mr. McMichael. Looking at you, Mr. Kerschner, and said, Mr. McMichael. Mr. Kerschner?
Okay, thank you. First, in terms of the Legislative Update, I believe it was about a couple weeks ago, we sent out emails to all of the legislatures with Carmel legislators with our priorities, and we sent out a slightly different email to our legislators inviting the opportunity if they would like to meet with us. We already have two meetings scheduled in the next couple of weeks, and I am sure that we will have more, especially as we start the Legislative Breakfast process with that going forward. So, I'm happy to take any questions on, on the Legislative Update.
Do, could you share who we are meeting with?
I'm happy to, we are meeting with representatives, with a representative from Senator Donley's office, and the other meeting that we have scheduled is with State Senator Spartz.
Do you happen to know who's going to be at the Legislative Luncheon in December?
I do not.
I don't know, I just thought maybe.
I do not.
Okay. Who does Spartz represent? I'm not familiar with him.
She, right, she has Kenley's District.
Oh, 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 thank you.
And it's Spartz?
Yeah, it's, I believe it's Spartz, S.P.A.R.T.Z.
Thank you. Do we know who took over Kenley's position with, was he with Ways and Means or Education?
He was Chair of, I don't know if it's Ways and Means, but it is the equivalent of Ways and Means, and it's, there was word as to who it was, and I think they just had Organization Day last week. I don't know if it was somebody that was officially appointed, but, but again, this is, this is not a budget year, so we're probably not expecting as much this year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Mike, that's fantastic. Thank you for making the, taking the time to meet. I know that is, I witnessed it called a burden, but it is a big responsibility, so I would, I appreciate that. Are you going with Amy, with Roger, or who are you tag teaming with?
Both of the meetings are here, so I will, at least one, I'm sure will, of them will be joining me, if not both.
Okay. Well, thank you both, as well. Mike?
I do also have a CRC report, in case you have not seen it in the news, the Executive Director of the Carmel Redevelopment Commission, Corey Meyer, has resigned at that position to pursue a career in politics. Henry Mesteski, who was a CRC Commissioner, is interim Executive Director, and I think even the more interesting point is his replacement as a Commissioner is Adam Cipena, who is currently a member of our Expedition class work, class group, so, and I believe he probably has children in, in the district, but I wish we could take credit for knowing that he'd become a leader in getting him in Expedition before that point, but it is good to have those people, and Corey Meyer, if not in this class, was in last year's Expedition class, so, again, continuing great relationships with the city and, and the Redevelopment Commission, I think clearly recognizes that great schools are their best tool for recruiting businesses, so we have a great partnership with them.
Thank you. Any other Board Reports to share? I know Katie had a couple items that she wanted to discuss... I know Katie had a couple items that she wanted to discuss with regards to Parks Board, and she'll bring that to us at the next meeting. It doesn't look as though we have anything else to share this evening, so, meeting adjourned.